Anything to order, I'd invite everyone to rise and join in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flagline of the United States of America and to choose a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Phyllis, could we have roll call, please?
Cam Collier.
Here.
Craig Kuscha.
Here.
Matt Dyer.
Here.
Tyler Fulonkam.
Here.
Wiley Surt.
Here. You're all email a copy of our minutes from our January 15th council meeting. If you've had a chance to look at them, I'd look for either a motion to amend or to accept.
Motion to accept.
Second. Have a motion and a second to accept the minutes from our January 15th meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? First thing I have up here tonight is Kurt. Kurt has been a busy boy. The last busy man, excuse me, Kurt. I didn't mean to disrespect you like that. He's been very busy and it's been in our long-term plan here the last couple of years to expand that department. Right now, it's a two-person team. It's Kurt as the department head and Sharon Brown as the assistant department head. And Sharon pretty much handles most of the administrative things here, dealing with a lot of people on the permit side. There's a lot of knowledge that Sharon has, a lot. And she's going to retire.
January 1st, 2020.
A year from now, a little less than a year from now. So we need to replace Sharon. But like I said, the long-term plan was to increase that staff to a department of three people, not two. So the plan right now is to hire someone and let them shadow Sharon.
Shadow Sharon as an assistant.
As an assistant with Sharon. And then, once that person gets on board, since we're already into February, we've kind of got money ahead, maybe about the, maybe October-ish or so, you're going to likely advertise for the next person, which would actually be-
An assistant building inspector.
An assistant to you and her both.
Correct.
Yes, that could do building inspections, et cetera. So I think, did you email the job description to everyone?
Yeah, Sharon said she sent it out to everybody.
Yes, she did.
I received it.
If you have, if everyone's had a chance to look at the job description, Phyllis, did you see it?
Yeah.
Wendy and you looking over it? I think it was pretty thorough. This is the job description that you'd like to hire for.
Correct.
And like I said, once we, once you get the applications, do the interviews, you'd hire someone and they would primarily shadow and learn Sharon's job.
Correct.
Is there any questions or comments?
I appreciate the plan of attack, knowing she's going to retire. This has been talked about for some time, it's nothing new. Go back decades ago, things were just built. Today, there's a lot more rules to follow and if something's built in Decatur, it's built correctly and appreciate your leadership in the department.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would agree.
Come a long way.
And foresight in preparing that job description so we know exactly what we're talking about. That's helpful, too, so thank you.
And Sharon has been an invaluable employee, like the mayor said, not an easy one to replace in that role.
We're going to try to replace 30 years in one year.
Yeah.
It's good to start early.
You want to know where something's at, she can generally point you right to it in the code book. She's good.
I refer to her as the boss. Sharon says good.
Plus proclamations. Yeah, she writes good proclamations, et cetera. So is there any discussion on this? If not, I'd like to give Kurt the okay to go ahead and what you'd do is you would post it internally first.
Correct.
All the departments within the city for a period of so many days, I forget. Jeremy, how many days do you got to post it?
Uh, no less, um, oh, two, 10 days. No less than three.
And then, if there's no one internally that is qualified or is sufficient for the job, then it would be advertised externally. So with that in mind, I don't know, should I do it by consensus or should I get a motion to go ahead and proceed?
I'll make a motion to approve the position and job search.
Okay. Have a motion and a second to proceed, to let Kurt go ahead and look for the next Sharon. Good luck. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. That's done. Next thing up is the third reading of ordinance 2019-1, which is our city purchasing ordinance. We did two readings the last meeting. Since then, is, are there any comments from the public or is there any comments from council that you've received from anyone in the public that we need to discuss? Changes our purchasing requirements, it will make things a lot easier for all of our departments to go out and purchase without having to go through a bidding process. We still have to get quotes but not bids, which bids take a lot more time, cost us a lot more money, so. I'll make a motion that we introduce it. Introduce ordinance 2019-1 on its third and final hearing, reading in short title only. Thank you. Second. Have a motion and a second to introduce ordinance 2019-1 in its third reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tim?
Ordinance 2019-1, short title, an ordinance of the common council of Decatur, Indiana, which repeals ordinances 2008-5, 2008-9, and 2013-14, which establishes purchasing agencies and agents for the city, which establishes rules and procedures for the purchases pursuant to Indiana Code 522, which establishes procedures for awarding contracts for public work projects pursuant to Indiana Code 36112, which establishes procedures for awarding contracts for professional services, and which amends Chapter 33 of the Decatur Code of Ordinances of 2015 as supplemented to be consistent with this ordinance.
Thank you, Tim. I'll make a motion to pass ordinance number 2019-1 in its third reading. Second. Have a motion and a second for passage of ordinance 2019-1. Would have roll call vote, please.
Cam Collier.
Yes.
Craig Kuscha.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fulonkam.
Yes.
Wiley Surt.
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 2019-1 has been adopted. Next thing I have, Jeremy, is our annual ADA compliance review.
As I pass these out, don't necessarily pay too much attention to the totals at this point. I will explain why the totals are a little different than what they should be. Annually, we are required by Endot for a highway to improve X amount of handicap ramps and remove barriers and such. You can kind of look on the, back from 2012, which was our first year all the way up to 2018, you can see that we're headed direct direction. The only big difference of this year is with the design changes that come into play every couple of years, I went back and started reevaluating where we were since 2012 and making some upgrades. The majority of these were included into the Endot repaving, the 224 project out here, which a lot of those were very minimal, but we are instructed through Endot to still count those on our inventory. Even though we do not pay for them, we still count them on our inventory, so they're on somebody's. Endot was wanting, during the very beginning, they were coming in each individual town in the same city or town, doing individual inventories, and finally their commissioners end up putting it back on the cities, let them include them into their inventory, and then Endot will still pay what, for those improvements, whatever that happens. So you can see, our requirement is a minimum of 12 per year. This year, in citywide, we were able to incorporate with the Endot repaving project to improve 55 ramps. The 55 ramps does not totally, it's not totally reflected from '17 and '18 due to a couple different reasons. Some of the ramps that were replaced were still color-coded in mine to where they were still uncompliant when I did the initial evaluation, so. I'll just go through the areas of review here. First and Jefferson, through our first street scape. We took a red and put it back to green, so that was one. The Monroe Street, Endot project improved 41 ramps. Madison Street, the Plaza project, we added ramps into that project, so that was an additional, that was eight total, that was added to green. Orphan Jackson, on a sidewalk program, 50/50 program, there was one that was red that turned to green. And then out at Peacekeepers Way, out at the jail, the commissioners put the sidewalks in, and that was an additional four new ramps into our inventory. So in '19, you'll see a bigger change in the numbers once I complete the citywide inventory and assessment, but kind of in short, that's why the numbers don't quite match up from '17, '18, but it's all good.
So I'm assuming the green means that it totally meets-
Correct.
...a requirement.
Yeah, it's just like the street, by the way.
Okay, so what's the difference between red and yellow?
The red is absolutely non-compliant. The yellow, at the time, was-
So it's like a toll-
When they were allowing some adjustments, whether it was paving adjustments or elevation changes-
Red could mean that there's not an ADA ramp there at all right now, right?
Well, not necessarily. It could be there but not anywhere close to being compliant. And green is obviously good to go.
Right, okay.
So on this paper, it gives you the instructions to contact me, I am the ADA coordinator. If there's a question or concern, you need a barrier replacement, it's just something that we have to do every year.
So you're identified as the coordinator for the city of Decatur?
I am identified as the coordinator.
Yes. Do you go beyond that or just the city?
Just the city.
Okay.
County county data.
So when Endot came through and they replaced what we thought were perfectly good ramps with their new state-of-the-art ramps, not that much different, but whatever, any ramps that we do now, are we using the new and improved stuff also that-
Yep, it changes every couple of years, so we just, every year, I go through additional training at Rhodes, so it brings you up to the latest and the greatest and-
Whenever it changes.
It's going to be a never-ending battle because once you get them all done, and once you do 12, what are you going to comply with? Probably 20, 25.
So does that take a perfectly good ramp from a green to a yellow at that point?
Yeah. Some of it's in adjustments, you know, they're finally starting to get everybody on the same page with the materials that are used. Three years, it was either basically concrete stamp like you would stamp like your patio to some fiberglass, to this, to that, to the brick, and then everyone's pretty much going to the fiberglass anyways, nobody's here to work with. That's what we've used since probably 14. You just want to get right off because you kind of see the writing on the wall as to where it is going.
Okay.
Questions, concerns? I mean, there's any problems or questions?
Thank you. Thank you, Jeremy. That's the only items that were on the actual agenda, although I see four hooligans here this evening that look like they might want something, so whoever the spokesperson, I'm sorry. Event forms? I'm sorry, we don't have any event forms.
I have some today.
I've got a resolution.
Boy, hell, man, what kinds of things are there? We'll get to you guys. Didn't get on the list? I asked people, give me their items from the agenda, Melissa gave me hers.
I was-
Listen to this one, this is good.
I have an event form request for the Madison Street Plaza. This is for Saturday, October 12th. They've refused requests to have a wedding on the Madison Street Plaza.
October 12th.
Yeah.
Yeah, I remember.
I've met with this person multiple times and they are doing everything to the T. They're, we're working with them on getting insurance taken care of. They would like to put up a tent and their tent person's already been down to check out the plaza and they're going to use the anchors that are installed, so this is exciting. This is why, one of the reasons why we built this is so people can use it. Again, it's for Saturday, October 12th. If they can get in a day early at least to put up the tent to make sure everything goes well, they look like to do that. There's a lot of unknowns right now and we're just, we're going to roll with it and try to do everything we can to make their event wonderful.
Yep, cool.
So.
One more purpose for the plaza.
The motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Tim, you have a resolution?
I do. With regard to the sewer project, you know that we're looking at the construction of a new tank and in order to move forward with the possibility of purchasing ground for that purpose, we have to express interest in parcels, so there are three parcels down at the corner of First and Jackson, heading north on the east side of First Street. It's just a preliminary step that shows that the city's possibly interested in acquiring those properties and it then authorizes the mayor as the city's purchasing agent to obtain two appraisals, because we have to get two appraisals to determine the average fair market value for those properties, because that then establishes the ceiling of the price that we can offer for them. So it's just a very preliminary step, doesn't commit the city to doing anything other than getting the appraisals.
Well, does it, give us the authority to contact these people, before we would get an appraisal, we would want to do a soil board, wouldn't we?
Well, they, if, that's something separate from this. This is a statutory requirement, getting any kind of study and phase one environmental study is a separate matter.
And while we're going to pass this resolution, if we get the delay that we're hoping to get, this may just be passed and then kind of sit there for a while.
Could, possibly.
Could. What's the resolution number?
It's resolution 2019-1.
Any questions, comments?
I'll make a motion then to introduce resolution 2019-1 by short title only.
Second. A motion and a second to introduce resolution 2019-1 by short title. All in favor?
Aye.
Tim?
Resolution 2019-1, short title, resolution of the common council of Decatur expressing an interest in purchasing real estate and authorizing appraisals.
Make a motion to pass resolution 2019-1.
Second. Have a motion and a second for passage of resolution 2019-1. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, resolution 2019-1. It's in the books.
We have three letters.
Do you have anything else?
We have some more things?
Yes.
This is required by Indiana Code, all checks outstanding unpaid for a period of two years as of December 31st of each year shall be declared canceled. I only have one check, it's for $185 that I'd like to write off if we have approval.
It's two years old, over two years old. So move. Second. Motion and a second for writing off an outstanding check that's over two years old. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Done. More event forms.
Craig, do you want to add to them? These are event, these are event forms for Decatur Highland Games, the Decatur German Fest, and-
Summer Concert Series.
Summer Concert Series. Do you want to comment?
We got 18 shows lined up this year, we probably got eight or 10 of them spoken forward booked. Basically, we filled out that one for the Madison Street Plaza, then we also would like to get Decatur German Fest on the plaza. Highland Games will be out at Riverside Field. I can get with the newspaper. Preliminary speaking, there's no big changes that we need to address. I mean, you've got the same setup with the police and the fire and- Yes, I've got it covered with the police and the fire and also the street department. On the Decatur German Fest, we might possibly close First Street just for food trucks and vendors because it got a little bit bigger than what we expected last year. What's the date for German Fest this year? It's August 23rd. I asked for the 23rd, 24th, we kind of did a little of the prelim and after discussing today with the committee, we might have a German ban on that Thursday night before. Do a warm-up and- Which is the 22nd. Could be, but that's already included in the summer concert. Three shows, 22nd, and then- Yeah, we'll do the official Voss tapping, tap-tapping and all jazz with the mayor and all the fanfare, that'll be on Friday evening, that's where we've got that big band from Ohio coming in. They're great. Okay. They'll be tense and all kinds of vending and stuff. Questions about any of the event forms?
The summer concert, you're going to have a lot more of them, too, right?
Yes, yeah, we got 18 lined up right now. Our goal, we've got one that's a Nashville artist that we have scheduled for July 21st, I'm working on sound, and then our goal is to, after Labor Day weekend, move it to Sunday afternoons between 4:00 and 6:00, just because of activities that go on with school, extracurricular activities, sports and things like that that go on on Thursday nights after Labor Day. I know school starts around the 14th of August, but I was going to continue the shows until Labor Day and then on Thursday evening and then move to Sunday afternoon. It's a good idea. I checked with the library and we won't have a conflicting schedule on those. Great. Comments, questions? Keep it rolling. You want to approve all three of these on one motion? Yeah, I'll make that motion. Have a motion and a second to approve the event forms for the summer concert series, German Fest, and the Highland Games. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I have to recuse myself, I apologize. Okay. Make a note in the minutes bar, but Craig refused himself.
Tyler.
Tyler. Anything else?
That.
Okay, I think that's everything we had. Now, gentlemen, you went from hooligans to gentlemen. What's on your agenda tonight?
I'm in charge of the hors d'oeuvres.
You're in charge of them?
Sure. I'm back Tuesday night, we're having hors d'oeuvres, so.
Come on up so that you can be on the recorded, yeah. Long day already. A couple things. Am I on? Yep, you're on. Zach on DC Gaming, he would like to put a bicycle rack out in front of the store. Okay. And I wouldn't think I'd ever have to come to the city council meeting to ask about a bicycle rack. You don't. We can put a bicycle rack? No. We can't. No, I didn't say you could or couldn't. I think you approached Melissa about it and it was, and what I think we would want to do is the same as we did on the racks on Second Street out here, and that is to run it by Decatur Main Street. They have a, what's the committee?
Design.
The design committee, and see what they would want to do, if they would, I think you were talking about taking more of the long ones with the slits and- It's sitting over the Mary's Inn right now. Yeah, have it power-coated and put it out there, and I think that the design committee would want to run that option past them in addition to the option of the two that we have out there right now, I think are about the 27. Well, today, there's already a bunch of bicycles sitting out in front of there, so I mean, it'll take like weeks or months or, I mean, I'd like to have something done by the end of the week. It just needs to be run through the Main Street.
Let me know that you've been thinking about the bike rack. I sent a message out to Endot. If something goes out there and it goes to the Main Street Design Committee, we want to make sure that we're, you're on a state highway, so we're respecting Endot's rules. I haven't heard that from them yet.
But then that would finalize through Main Street.
Okay.
We just have to, you guys kind of have to wait a little bit, be patient.
What do you think? That you can't ride a bike on the sidewalk anyway, you know that? I didn't know. One of those double negative things, the ordinance, you can't ride bikes on sidewalks.
No, I would think the only concern would be Endot, that's the only, that's the first thing that came out of my mind was if, I don't know why they'd have an issue, but-
We have the sculptures all the way along there, so.
And we haven't applied for a right-of-way exception for the sculpture, so we did go to Endot for that, that in there legally and in the correct place.
Okay.
Patience, my friend. That's all I can say.
I just like to do things.
I know, I know.
Parking. I'm fine. Tonight, there was three open spots and I had 126 people in the cinema. Last night, there was one open spot and I had 129 people in the cinema. I, is there anything differently I should do? I mean, you guys all watch Facebook, I'm the most hated man in Decatur. I left some of the tiny gallery back there, I mean-
I will say that I like what you're, I mean, we had done this before, but the fact that what your son did, right, in showing where all the public spaces are already.
I guess pretty face of that.
We have, I mean, I don't know how many times we've done that, but the more we can get that out there, the fact that it's, and something that we could share on Facebook, I think is going to be helpful to everybody, but there are-
You guys can use that and steal it, I mean-
Plenty of public spaces beyond next door, so.
You know, I told you that back in 2016, we did a parking study downtown, granted, AB Cinema was not there, Zach's business was not there, the restaurant was not there, Monster Bees was not there. But there are, if I recall right, I looked it up today on the, the study was done by NERC, Northeast Indiana Regional Coordinating Council, and there are 1,461 parking spaces in downtown Decatur between Jackson, Adams, First, and Third. That includes street parking, every parking lot, whether it's private or public, parking spaces that are like tucked in behind businesses like Vinnie's here or where, you know, so, but it was an extensive study, it took about a month to do, and 1,461 parking spaces. Yeah, I'm fully aware there's a lot and- And I know a lot of people think that we need to add parking in Decatur, well, once our parking lots that we have, the two municipal ones here and over here get full, then I think we could look at more parking. But right now, they're not anywhere close to full.
But I think the one thing we could do, not just to help you but other businesses, is to better identify where those are.
And Jeremy is working on that right now.
Big work, though.
Okay. Again, I got enough for me and my people and I don't know what to do, I mean, $40 an hour to have an officer- Not much more you could do, Corey. And it's going to, we're going to do it for a while until everybody finally gets to work. The first night, they turned away 35 cars, then 22 or 23, then 18, two last night and one tonight. I mean, people finally- They're catching on, aren't they? So. Yep, and just keep notifying me when you're going to have things like, so I can make sure like tonight I can- Tuesday night, we got Main Street meeting there. Yeah. And then Jenny's doing- But we don't have a council meeting. Okay. And then the next Tuesday night, Jenny's doing a yoga thing there with all the proceeds going to the Hennepin Project. The 19th? That's, no, the 26th. Ah, that's, okay. The 19th, there wasn't anything, I don't think. Yeah. I guess they'll email you something. Okay. So, we're good. All right? I'm good. Zach, be patient. He'll be more patient than Corey.
But that's awesome, but how many bikes are out, I mean, that's cool.
There were three there today. I saw, I saw three or four kids on bicycles today. There was some there yesterday and he said, can I get a bike back? I'm like, I don't, no, I mean, so.
I think provided that the state says yes, I think, yeah, fine.
Yeah, I would, too. But then, do we want, do we want, you know, the old, old-school bike rack, bike rack? Well, this would look neat, I mean, I got a picture of it, I think I sent it to Kurt. Can you board with all these people real quick? Anywho, and I'll take a Santa Tita, no powder coat, whatever color you guys want, I mean, I don't care. I would be nice, I don't want some rusty old piece of junk sitting out there. Okay, we just want them on through the proper channels by the state, by Decatur Main Street Design Committee, and we'll be back with you as soon as we can. Now, don't come asking me tomorrow because it won't be tomorrow. I got everything tomorrow. All right, congratulations on your small business of the year. That's something not expected, just so everybody knows, it's not in our plan, so. Hope you all come Thursday night, we got some cool stuff we're going to unveil and- We'll be there, most of us will be there. Good. Am I done? Yep, thank you. Okay, next thing then, before I go to the department heads, if I can find it here, I want to take a couple minutes and kind of give a shout-out to our Public Works Department. I read a statement on, actually, my daughter texted this to me, I imagine she found it found it on Facebook most likely, but the statement said, "January was a tough year, but we made it." And it kind of was, I mean, while it was just one month, I mean, we experienced all kinds of weather and, and a lot of overtime. Our Public Works team, man, I mean, they stepped up. Two weekends in a row, we had snow and while most people were home sleeping, our guys were out there in the middle of the night plowing, and it was on the weekend, you know, during a time when, when they could have been at home. So, two weekends in a row, we had snow, and then last week, the Arctic air comes in, temp's way below zero, and I don't know if it was Tuesday, Wednesday, Jeremy gets ahold of me late afternoon and says, "We got a water main break on Bowman." And it was sub-zero, it was like seven below or something like that, "We got a water main break on Bowman Avenue out by Vixler Insurance." And, man, I felt terrible, I didn't, you know, what can you do? And Jeremy, you know, it's, it's going to be after hours now, he gets ahold of the guys, says, "Anybody can, any warm body we can have there, we'll rotate you in and out." And when I got off work, I drove out by there and, you know, they had plenty of guys and I mean, they were going at it. And before I left there, he comes up to me, says, "Well, we got another one, that one we get done here, we're going to have to go to Anthony Wayne Meadows." We had a second water main break in Anthony Wayne Meadows. So, between Jeremy and Don and, and Matt Schultz and Marty Martin and Dirk Cannon and all the guys, they did a fantastic job of plowing, taking care of water main breaks. I mean, can you imagine getting down in a hole with water and having to take your gloves off because you're going to have to grab a wrench and, you know, and I just can't, I can't imagine it myself, but our guys did it, a bunch of tough guys. So, that's that, and then, was it Friday, Jeremy?
Yeah.
Mid-afternoon, Jeremy gives me a call, says, "I got a situation." I said, "What's that?" He said, "Geneva doesn't have any water." I said, "What's going on?" He goes, "Well, they, they can't find the problem." He said, "I guess the guys from Geneva had been out plowing most of the night, and they only got like three guys on their crew, they're tired and they'd been, they didn't have any water, and they were trying to find the source of it all and they couldn't seem to find it." Jeremy says, "I was just wondering if it'd be all right if I took a couple of the guys and went down and helped them." And I said, "Well, if she was another foot, they'd probably come up and help us." So, he put out, pleaded a few guys, I think there were five or six guys, packed up, they took a truck and whatever, went down there and helped out Geneva, I think it was about 8:30 at night on Friday night, I got the notification, "Hey, we're all done, we're back, got them all taken care of." Yesterday, I got a letter from the town of Geneva, from Rob Johnson, their workforce manager, and I want to read what, what he said, and he sent this to both me and the Mayor, Mayor McKean of Burn. He said, "It's with humble gratitude that I write this letter on behalf of the town of Geneva. On Friday, February 1st, the town of Geneva experienced a major water main leak on our main line that supplies water from our plant to our tower. As our workers were out plowing the snow from the night before, a motorist pointed out the leak to one of our workers around 6:45 a.m. Scrambling to change our mode of operation, we started in our process. Necessary phone calls were made and we were started and..." I'll try this again, "Necessary phone calls were made and we then started the long project. As we began to tackle the project, we had one problem after another. As the locators showed up to mark utilities, we found we had to contend with frozen ground, a six-inch natural gas main, a buried electric line and two phone service lines. On top of this, our tower was quickly draining and one fire alarm at the factory had been set off. As the process of excavating began, the task of locating exactly what we had began as well. The 10-inch, 10 inches of frozen crust made it appear that the issue was in locations that it actually wasn't. By the time we finally located the area of the leak, our guys were getting cold, tired and frustrated. While I was working alongside our crew and in the hole, at one point, I looked up and there stood Jeremy Gilbert with the city of Decatur. He looked at what we had and stated, 'I'll be right back.' Then I looked up again and there stood John Kreider and Brad Yoder from the city of Burn. In a short amount of time, Jeremy returned with the crew of guys and equipment. At one point, I left the hole while the hole was excavated out and the Decatur guys then jumped in. I stood in awe as I couldn't believe what just had happened. These two cities just came without being asked and literally cut our job down tremendously. When the job was finally finished, thank yous just didn't seem right. To you, the city of Burn and the city of Decatur, we, the town of Geneva, are indebted. Mayors, thank, indebted. Mayors, you both should be very proud of your crews and definitely they went above and beyond." And it was signed Robert Johnson, workforce manager, town of Geneva. So, with that, I just, like I said, and I've commented to a lot of people in public, I know all the council members have, what a great crew we have. You know, Don had texted me over the weekend, he says, "Ken, I've worked on a lot of crews," he says, "but these guys, these guys are really good and it's a lot of teamwork." So, it's really cool and I think we'll have them all on our team. That's all I have, gentlemen. With that, department heads, Lenny?
Just, we put on three reserves last Friday, so that's a couple of five now, and we're doing pretty good right now.
Lenny, that's awesome, I mean, we, yeah, from where we were to where we're at, and you got more people wanting to do it, so, yeah, yeah. Les?
I'm good.
Kevin?
Water plant projects going along, we should have a price, I think now by the 21st of February, guaranteed max price that we can move forward, hopefully break down soon as we're ready.
Anything to add, Bill?
No.
Kurt?
Good.
Don?
Good.
Kerry?
Thank you.
Jeremy?
The sound system for Madison Street project should be completed, um, in the next week for the beginning of the bowling week. It was delayed, obviously, by, by the nature of the weather for a couple of weeks. I talked to Chris Castell last weekend, I thought he'd drive it, he said they would be back on state border shortly.
And then, they don't go out and work in the frigid weather like our guys do, huh?
Well, he has to force the power grid down there, so he was hoping...
Right, I'm just, I'm just, just picking.
Back to your comment about Geneva, you know, the guys have done a wonderful job, you know, and we've had some turnover at last few years, but we're regrouping, guys are really taking pride in their job. There's no less feeling built about this and running out of water. You know, we went through it, it's, it's not a good feeling, you know, and, you know, Rob's working for us down there, and we have hard work, we have numbers in what they do. Talking with him, and somebody who's currently laborious, very, very grateful, talking with their court treasurer, they're, they're very appreciative of people, so...
Thanks again. Kerry?
They're big fans.
How about Kerry? Bill?
I'm fine.
Melissa?
Yeah. On behalf of the theater Main Street, I want to share with you that February is I Love Decatur Month, and it's organized...
I've got an idea, sure.
It organized, system process going on in the month of, as of the month of February, it's kind of a blah month to get people out and about shopping and eating downtown, so, these flyers are going around, there's more than 25 local businesses, you guys, more than 25 local businesses, what they're doing for the month, a lot of them are, they keep running their I Heart Decatur button campaign, if you have your button on in the store or the restaurant, they will give you a special discount. We've got I Heart Decatur button on, so it's two bucks, and like I said, if you don't eat or shop, it will pay two bucks. If you need buttons, I've got them.
Great idea to have that in the month of February.
Sold some at the chamber today, people bought some buttons.
We sold some at the department head meeting this morning.
Good deal.
Uh, Tim, I think you do have something else.
Yeah, just, two things. One is Senator Boot down in Crawfordsville is actively involved in pushing to...
Making life comfortable for me this way.
Yeah, pushing to eliminate annexation unless it's strictly voluntary. He also has introduced legislation that eliminates fringe zoning, even if it exists, it'll be phased out. So, I'm not sure what is driving his attitude, but I suspect that there was a run-in with Crawfordsville or some municipality, but he's on the warpath, and it really hinders the ability of the cities and towns to protect themselves, to grow, and so what I would encourage you to do is, in the case of the annexation ordinance, it's already passed out of the Senate, it's now over in the House, I'd encourage you to contact Matt Lehman and voice your opposition to that bill.
What bill number?
I, I believe it's SB 94, and the other bill is SB 535 with regard to the fringe zoning. To my knowledge, it's not come out of the Senate yet, but I would certainly encourage you to contact Matt and Senator Holdman about that as well. The, the other thing that I would like to, I'd certainly like to applaud the Public Works Department, I was out when they started to work at Vixler's, I wasn't there at the site, but I saw them, what they were dealing with, and it was cold. And those guys, there were, I don't know, Jeremy probably knows, or Don, looked like eight or 10 guys out there, and I know they had to rotate shifts because of the danger of being exposed too long, so I, I would stack our crew up against anybody. And I would also point out that, you know, our police department, our fire department, our sewage utility department, those people are out there in those kind of conditions as well. We are going to, that a gratitude. They're out there protecting us, so thank you very much.
Hey, with that, public, Dan, just like old times, anything to say?
I'm good. I actually just stopped by to bring up what happened in Geneva, I didn't know if everyone knew about it. I don't know if you guys are going to keep it on the waters, out down in Washington.
That's great.
The Geneva guys were very happy that they showed up and they were thankful.
Thanks for coming. Don't be a stranger. Anything from council members?
Uh, real quick, I was out at the street garage on Sunday for recycling, this is kind of directed to the media so they can let people know. It, I mean, it's sloppy, it's messy out there, obviously the conditions, and, and there were some folks out there that were frustrated with, and voicing their concern about the, how it's, we need more gravel, we need concrete or something like that. I think the reality of it is, we know, they did put stone down last year, and I talked to Jeremy about it, it's absolutely in the plan to have improvements for, in, in 19, but I think we understand already where their time and effort has been for several weeks, if not months. But, so, I, I guess I would just encourage everybody to understand it is coming and, and we appreciate the fact that they're using it, continuing to do so. It just may be a little sloppy when it's wet.
We just want to hear that big swing in the modern age, I think it's slow.
I just stayed in the truck and had my boys do it.
I would like, yes, I, I would like to announce our Decatur Main Street annual meeting is being held next Tuesday, that'd be February 12th, at ABC Cinema. We thank them for hosting this annual meeting at 5 o'clock, and we want to invite people there.
It's open to the public?
Yes, but we do need to have reservations.
I need to know what food to have there.
Yes, and West End is catering, thanks to Corey, so we appreciate that, that support.
And just to reiterate what Melissa was talking about this month, February, we want people to come out and appreciate the recognition of that, and getting people downtown during February is a good thing.
That's right.
I would also like to just repeat thanking our city workers and everything that's been going on the last several weeks and their positive attitudes and dedication to the work. Thank you.
Motion to pay the claims?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to pay the claims, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And a motion to adjourn.
Second. I have a motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.